...intention and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is the consent agenda approved town council meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2019, special town council meeting minutes of November 25th, 2019. Accept the following monthly financial activity report town clerk. Approve petition of National Grid and Verizon for joint pole replacement on Spring Street. Approve abatements resulting from motor vehicle corrections and real property adjustments submitted by the tax assessor. Any motion made in second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, first public forum. Anyone wishing that you heard tonight? Public podium, state your name and address, and go ahead.
Joe Moreau, Oldie Moreau. You know, as I look around, as usual, I'm the oldest person here. It never fails. For a minute or so, I want to go back to the way back issue. I remember as a boy growing up, I'd go out to play back in the summer or play hockey in the winter in Coventry. And my parents always used to tell me, "Make sure you're home by dark." And we'd go out to dinner or whatever, and no one locked the doors. We'd just leave our doors wide open. Most of the neighborhood did the same thing. Things have changed. I think technology has brought a lot of improvement. I have serious concerns about what is happening in our state, in the country, and in the world. If you look at the mass shootings in Las Vegas a while back, where there's someone in a hotel room with an automatic rifle, just shooting people for no reason. Two people walked into a Jewish grocery store this past week. You could see them walk across the street, and they just opened fire on people that are in this grocery store. The worst one I saw recently was where the UPS driver his vehicle was hijacked, and the police and the two or three guys that are in his vehicle opened fire at each other. They're busy intersection with cars all over the place. It's just incredible what's happening. I don't know how many times you've looked in progress and knew about shootings and stabbings that's happened today. As I attended many of these meetings the past 18 months, when I go into a building, progress because of being in the military, but I always look around. The first thing I look for are the exit doors. I tend to sit in the back of the room. The other thing is, when you think about some of the meetings we've had here with 60, 70 people crowded in this room. We always have a police officer. They do a great job, but I just feel that, and I don't want to frighten anyone about this, but this is the world that we live in today, unfortunately. My wife is the president of her church, and the last couple of years, they've had to implement security issues. The doors are closed when they go into church. They, you know, they train people how to use a fire extinguisher. You know, there's one man that sits in the back with a fire extinguisher right next to him. Does that work? That's unfortunate that we have to do this. The other thing that I'm really concerned with is recently, one of our town council members had to call the police twice, twice for issues from the same resident. Another town council member had an issue with a resident recently on the phone. The spouse said, "I think you should call the police." And that's what it's come down to, where people that are doing a job for our town are being threatened. On Sunday, December 8th, two residents from Chase Hill Road were followed by one of their neighbors, and there was an exchange at the gas station in town. Police report was filed, and the police said that they would speak to that individual. And I'm sure the police would do that. On Monday, December 9th, at the hearing for Chase Hill Road, this same resident directed offensive words while I was speaking. This resident was spoken to by Captain Carrier. Again, that's two incidences in two days with the same individual. I met with Captain Carrier on Tuesday, December 10th. He was very helpful. What I never thought of was the meetings that we have at the charitable middle school. Obviously, they're in Richmond. So if you want to file a complaint, you have to go to the Richmond Police Department to file a complaint. I'm going to do that. So I spoke to Captain Carrier. I had no intention of filing a complaint. He offered to help me, which I'm sure he would do, to go to Richmond. And there's a Title 11 I want to talk about, and I'll give you copies of. He said that would not apply because of the size of the auditorium. He said, "But if that issue happened here in this building, a person could be arrested for those actions." So I understood that, and the police, you know, have more important things to do than to worry about things like this. But I'd like to hand out to Marietta and council, please. I'm sure you're familiar with this. And it's Title 11 Criminal offenses. And somebody gave this to me about six months back because of some issues that the police corrected on Oldie Moreau. But basically, it talks about disorderly conduct. And it clearly states in item number three, directs at another person in a public place offensive words which are likely to provoke a violent reaction on the part of the as person so addressed. If you look at the bottom, any person found guilty of a crime of disorderly conduct shall be imprisoned for a term of not more than six months or fined not more than $500. So there are some serious consequences for actions that happen. I believe we need to improve the security at public meetings for certain items on the agenda. Obviously, because of budget constraints, you cannot have two police officers at every meeting. I mean, you look tonight, this is fine. But other times I sit here and I'm just thinking, oh. In my opinion, I believe for the rest of the meetings for Chase Hill Road, I believe that we should have two police officers at the meeting that's coming up on January 13th. And I don't know, there's one witness left, so I don't know if a decision will be made then. But I strongly suggest that we have two police officers for that particular hearing. When I get up to speak, I looked at a video at the last meeting for Chase Hill Road. The attorney was about seven or eight rows back from the landowner, and the attorney went over him, sat right behind the landowner, just to make sure that he was going to get up. It's a difficult time that we live in, and I think we need to do more. On this particular case, I'm not saying all of them, but to have two council members threatened, to have a resident followed and threatened, to have, you know, things like this happen on meetings. We're better than that. I just think we need to be proactive on something like this. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else spoke?
Ed Wiegand, John F. Allen. I wanted to speak relative to the agenda item that talks about the discussion, future discussion of whether to limit public input and the topics that public input would be, what topics could be discussed during public input, public forum. And the way that I'd like to describe it is I'd like to describe it in terms of rights. And the rights that I'd like to specifically, that I'd like to think apply here is the right of freedom of petition. And it's a constitutional right. And just to summarize, the Constitution states that Congress shall make no law bridging the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. That has essentially, in modern legal parlance, been collapsed into freedom of speech. So let me then talk about freedom of speech. And the Constitution states that Congress shall make no law bridging the freedom of speech or of the press. I want to speak specifically to that portion that talks about freedom of speech and the right, our right to petition the government for redress of grievances in terms of our right to express that verbally to you. If you take away the right of the public to speak on any topic which they wish to inform you, except as limited as you see fit as a council, you're essentially depriving individuals of the right to speak of any other topic to which they are legally entitled to grieve to you, the political body, and seek you to redress that grievance. Many years ago, I was, I participated in town government. Town government sought to rezone John Gilman's land because they didn't like what he was proposing to do at Exit 1 in terms of the land. There was a public meeting that was held in the Asherway Gymnasium. It was filled to capacity, and when I arrived after work, there were already speakers in progress. And one after the other, they stood up, and they denigrated John Gilman. And they told the, whether it was zoning board or the, anyway, the town body that was holding the meeting, they were telling the town body that they needed to rezone that piece of land. I was the last speaker to speak at that meeting, and I was the only one to speak in turn, in support of Mr. Gilman in terms of his property rights. Because what that town government body was seeking to do was extinguish his property rights. When he bought that property, it was commercial property. His plan for that property was in accordance with the zoning, commercial. And yet, that zoning board sought to remove that right, his personal property rights, by rezoning that land and considering it just, you know, in the best interest of the town. I kept saying over and over again, "You're extinguishing his rights. It's a taking. In any, no matter how you dress it up, it's a taking." And that's what it's all about. It's about rights, fundamental rights. It's not whether I'm pro-development or anti-development. It's not whether I'm pro-solar or anti-solar. It's about our right to speak and to be heard and to say that I'm not in agreement with what you're doing, and this is why. We have, many of us can agree and can speak civilly. Some of us can't. And yet, freedom of speech includes the right to express ourselves as best we can. And if others take offense at that because you've extinguished their rights, it's a very fine line to have the police come up to the podium, touch someone on the elbow who has just shouted at the council, and inform that individual that he would be removed unless he lowers his voice. It's a very fine line where the police are treading on his right to express himself, his free speech rights as best he knows how. I listened to Joe talk about the definition, that if someone considers it, a normal person considers it to be threatening, the individual can be jailed and fined. And yet, when we, when we try to participate in government by limiting what we can say and how we can say it, you're essentially limiting our ability to express ourselves. And you are therefore, you're limiting our rights. More recently, I was asked by Mr. Teff whether I was pro-solar or anti-solar, and I said I'm neither. I'm all about property rights in this case. When the town council decides that they will extinguish a butter's property rights, when a butter's purchased their property, they look around, they decide how they're going to invest their money. They look at companion zoning, they look at neighborhood zoning. They see that all around them is all residentially zoned. So they pump down their money, they invest their personal property in a home. And they can expect that the sidelines of their home or the setbacks on the neighboring property will be residential. And yet, they can also expect the noise levels. And even if they develop the neighboring property, they can expect the noise levels of that neighboring property will be in compliance with residential noise levels, not commercial noise levels. So when the town council rezones the neighboring property to industrial solar power plant commercial, what they've done is they've extinguished the personal property rights that the residential abutters had at the time that they purchased the property with the full expectation that there would be, that there were abutters would have to comply with all the residential zoning requirements. And that they could enjoy their property with the expectation that the abutter would be a residential property. Even if it were developed into homes, it doesn't matter. So you, when the town council did that rezoning, they did that, in my opinion, illegal spot zoning from residential to industrial solar power plant, industrial commercial. They extinguished the abutters' property rights, and the abutters' sole remedy was to come before you and to tell you, "We don't agree with what you did, and this is why." They also have, the abutters also have a right, the right to, the right to peaceably assemble also includes the right of association. Individuals can associate with groups as a group and have a group represent their individual rights. That cannot be extinguished. That is a constitutional protection that's been employed since the king, since the Magna Charter. I would, I would summarize by saying that what you're doing by considering to curtail public forum to only those topics that are on the agenda. Let me, let me back up one second because there's another, there's another point. And that other point is that when we experience something that goes on in government, for example, the chairman of the Conservation Commission publicly denigrated in writing a number of individuals who sought to participate in town government. And I was one of the individuals that was presenting. I presented on wind turbine noise. And I did it in full expectation that I'm participating in government, I'm discussing things rationally, logically, and giving you information that you otherwise wouldn't have to make a decision as to what you wanted to do in a particular sector. That is, whether or not to have a moratorium on wind turbines in town. When Mr. Buford chose to, in writing, denigrate that participation and to label me as a NIMBY for participating just because of my viewpoint, my only redress was to come before you, to present you with a letter of petition, and to ask for your assistance with redressing this because he presented himself in that article in writing as a member of town government. I was essentially ignored in that, but I was allowed to speak. Mr. Buford's conduct was not on the agenda for that evening, but I was allowed to speak, and I was allowed to speak to that topic. And I was allowed to present to you and to the public my grievance, the basis for my grievance, and my request for you to redress that grievance. The fact that you chose to ignore that, that's your right. But I had to inform other people of what's going on and what problem I had. So to this, to this issue of should we curtail public forum to only those items that are on the agenda and to only those speakers that the council president chooses to recognize is a very dangerous abridgement of our rights, in my opinion. And I talked about those rights, what I consider them to be. I gave you several examples of how curtailing those rights would have harmed me personally and how I use those rights to speak, to express favorable opinions about other rights, personal property rights. And I would ask that you not approve a limitation on public speaking during public forum, a limitation on that public speaking, or recognition of only certain individuals. And I hope that you'll strongly consider that if you do not provide us with a means for redress, if you do not provide us with a means to participate in town government, which we do all the time during public forum, it's our only opportunity because we can submit article, we can submit information to the council president and request it be put on the agenda to be discussed. It does not guarantee that that will be agenda to be discussed. So therefore, we have no forum except this public forum to inform you of what's going on. I would really hope that you would consider that those rights are paramount and that they need to be preserved and that you not vote in favor of this proposal to abridge those rights during public forum.
Good evening. Luanne McCormick from Lisa Ling. To you back a little bit on what Ed was saying. And when I read Cynthia Drummond's article this morning, it was a, definitely it was a shock. It was a shock in the fact that the idea that given the amount of upheaval in this town and the amount of difficulty that residents have had on what's going on, you know, in here, the idea of curtailing anybody's ability to speak out, I think, is, is just not the right direction to be heading. I would be, I would be, I would be trying to head in the other direction. If I were sitting where you're sitting, I would be looking at having workshops and inviting more and more and more people to come and speak and tell me, you know, tell us what's going on. How are you feeling? How is this affecting you? Because my understanding is, is that you all work for us. That's my understanding. If I have that wrong, please correct me. So if that is the case, I haven't received no correction here, then I would think that you would want to hear what's happening. And what Ed was just talking about, you know, this came up relatively recently about the fact that we can't hear, the only way for us to get information on the agenda is to go through the president. Do any of the other three of you think that if I put something on there that the president doesn't like, that it's going to go on the agenda?
Can I respond?
Why can't, why, I'm happy to have a response. I'm happy to have a response. Thank you. Go ahead, though.
Any member of the public wants something put on the agenda, whether or not I am interested in the topic or I agree with it, I will, as a courtesy, ask the council president to put it on. But that doesn't necessarily mean I will support it or it's a topic I'm interested in. But as a courtesy, for discussion purposes, I kind of do that.
Well, and I appreciate that, but that still doesn't guarantee it gets on correctly. Correct. Okay, so we're back to where we started, which is the fact that if I want to talk about something, let's say, let's just use a hypothetical. And let's say that you go ahead and you get put in place whatever it is that you, as President Lindolphy, want in place, okay? And I'm talking to the other three of you about this. Are you okay with the fact that at that point, it is the sole discretion of Mr. Lindolphy what we have the ability to talk about up here? Except for what's on the agenda, which, by the way, we can go back to, it's at the sole discretion of Mr. Lindolphy. I'm not comfortable with that. And I would hope that the other three of you aren't. Because again, you work for us, we put you up there, and you need to have our backs, please. The other thing that I wanted to talk to very briefly is, I was really confused, Barbara, by the, one of the things that you talked about during the solar workshop, about the fact that you made a statement that the, that the land at Maxton, yeah, Maxton Hill would not, that the reforestation was a red herring, that the land would never be reforested. So we went from having these ideas about all these solar farms being land banking and automatically reverting to, and listening to a usurping of the planning board and endless discussion about mountain laurel, blueberry bushes, and pollinating plants, to, to, you're right, it's not going to ever have forests put back on it. It's either going to be farm, or houses, or buildings. Now, I have another question, and I know that you have the ability to answer. So how's it going to be farm or houses or buildings when you've rezoned it commercial? How's that going to happen? You rezoned a commercial, although in the beginning, Mr. represented as though it would go back to RFRA. And now we know that's not the case. So now, we have a statement from you saying it's never going to be reforested, much to the absolute shock of the Maxton Hill people who hadn't actually kind of followed along exactly what happened with regards to the automatic reversion not being able. So how is it that reforestation is a red herring? How is it that you know that, is it just the fact that you're finally realizing that the jig is up and that this really is commercial and it really isn't ever going to have another tree planted on it? I just, I'm confused by the process of how that went.
Yeah, Luanne, just before she attempts to minimally answer. Again, this is a perfect example of why I need to make changes in public forum. This is a project that was prior approved, and it is not, this topic is not on the agenda.
What does that have to do with it?
It has everything to do with it.
So you, you don't want to hear what I have to say?
No, you can say what you want. We just can't respond to the extent that you want us to.
She can respond to what she said.
She can, right.
That's all I want.
Okay, I just want to preface that.
That's all I want. I'm not asking for any more than that.
I can only respond for informational purposes. I can't respond to make it a discussion because that's part of public forum. You are correct. The workshops were wonderful because we can discuss back and forth. In public forum, I can respond only for informational purposes, not to begin a discussion with you. So if you want my answer on that, it's going to be a little longer, but you may not discuss back. I can't discuss. So reforestation, when Maxton Hill was originally done, let alone any of the other solar projects, this council definitely wanted to go back to RFRA. We are quite under the impression that we need to, the council that will be there at the time has to apply for that, has to bring it forward so the commercial can go back to RFRA, which is why we have it in the ordinance that we wrote, because we would like that to happen. But RFRA is not reforesting. RFRA is farm, forest, residential, open space. What I meant by is a red herring to reforest, to put all this money into reforestation. It may be forest, it may be farm, it may be open space, it may be plants, it may be a cornfield or a meadow, it may even be houses if it goes back to RFRA. But the idea that people are actually going to reforest it, some may. You're absolutely right. It might happen. But it probably won't in practical terms. It will become houses, open space, farm, meadow. It may become, it can't become commercial unless the town council agrees that it can stay commercial. But the ordinance for each of the solar said that it will go back to RFRA with the proper process because that's what our council has decided we would like to do. Now, a council in 20 years may not, and we have no idea what that council will do. But the idea that you have to put hundreds of thousands into reforestation in particular practically will probably never happen. So spending, spending hours and hours of time on it is to me a waste of time. What you want to do is make sure it goes back to RFRA and have the person who owns it at that time, it is property rights, that they can leave it as a meadow, they can leave it as a farm, they can make it a cornfield. You cannot assume they're going to, or try to make them, put it back as a forest when they no longer want the solar. So that is what I mean by it's a red herring. It's a waste, it's wasting your time here when you have far more interesting things over in another area. And more important, because to me, it is important it goes back to RFRA, but it isn't necessarily by any means going to be.
but it isn't necessarily by any means going to be forest again. And if all land is reforested, then all of our open space, our food production space, is used up. And I believe in the future, we may need pastures and we may need cornfields. We need food, not just forest, unless you intend to eat antelope and mushrooms. So that's what I mean by it is a red herring. Because your concentration should be on making it RFRA and letting the property rights of the owner at that time decide what RFRA is. That's all. So in closing, those properties are commercial. They will not stop being commercial until they are changed back to, changed to something else, if they're ever changed to something else. But as of right now, they are commercial. There is nothing in play that will automatically revert them to anything. They will have to be changed. And if they are already commercial, more than likely whoever owns them is not necessarily going to be particularly invested in returning it to RFRA. So I think it's relatively reasonable to say that, that that property's been turned commercial. Now, and also, I don't want to take up too much time, but also, I just, I really do want to come back around and say that it is a great concern to me, the fact that, that this idea about limiting topics has even been broken, given where we are in this town. Thank you.
To say that I'm deeply troubled by this proposal to limit public forum to only topics on the agenda is an understatement. I think that there are, there are a number of things, but that there are four that I want to raise that I find particularly concerning about it. Number one is, has already been raised, but that has to do with the fact that it's the council president who decides what goes on the agenda. Regardless of what everybody else on the council wants, and regardless of whether I send an email to Mr. Landoffy and ask for something to be put on the agenda, or I send an email to any of the other councillors, there is no guarantee that that's going to get on the agenda unless it's something that he wants on the agenda. So I find that very, very concerning. Because that's going to limit everybody in this room's ability to be able to talk about things that they have a problem with or that they're concerned about, or that they just want everybody to know about. And I think that's part of what this process should be about, is having people come here. You want people to be engaged in what goes on in town. Doing something like limiting what people can talk about is just going to shut that down completely. So I find that very, very concerning. The, the purpose, in my opinion, or one of the purposes of public forum is for constituents to be able to share their thoughts and ideas and concerns. And I kind of touched on that just a little bit ago. But so that everybody else in the room can hear them. And even though we can't have a discussion about it, if you bring up something, maybe, maybe you'll think, yeah, that's something that we'd like to have some type of a workshop about. People can't talk about it, not going to happen. I know we've been told before that we can send an email to anybody on the council, and that's all wonderful that we can correspond directly with all of you. But again, that's one-on-one. That's not having my concerns or my issues brought into a public situation for everybody else to hear. And then, and then sort of related to that, the fourth thing is that that kind of puts the town council president as the intermediary between the members of the council and the constituents. So I find that really bothers. A few weeks ago, and I really struggled at that time whether or not to say it, but a few weeks ago at a town council meeting, I commented that I thought that Mr. Landoffy's actions seemed to suggest that he fancied himself to be the king of Hopkinum. This proposal is yet another example of that kind of behavior. This attempt to silence residents is outrageous. In my opinion, it's absurd and, in my opinion, absolutely can't identify. I'm opposed to any changes in the process for public forum that will limit the public's ability to bring up topics and talk about them. And I think that every resident of the town, regardless of how they, where they stand on any of the issues, should be concerned about this suggestion that we change how we run public forum and limit it to only things that are on the agenda.
Yes, Dorothy?
Whoops. So far as city town council meetings go, I believe I have the right to feel safe, to feel secure, to have a right to speak, and I should have a right to be able to listen. There have been times when public forum has turned into such a rowdy group that they scream when someone speaks about something that they don't agree with. You can't even hear what the comments are. If you get up to speak and you speak about something that's not popular, people are stomping their feet, screaming. People in the audience will be screaming, liar, liar, lies. You can't even hear what other people are saying. So I would like to see people that are being disruptive removed. Because they interfere with my rights. My rights are to be able to speak, to be able to speak and be heard, and to be able to listen to other people who are speaking.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I prepared some remarks. I know what it seems like on the surface in terms of modifying a public forum. It's not listed as a vote, it's just, I can only talk to one council person. I talked to Sylvia, I've gotten some suggestions from her. You know, the reason or the rationale, I'll get into a little bit later, about why I'd like to modify, and again, it's strictly modifying the public forum to get a better handle on the business at hand that we have to deal with, to control some of the rowdiness that's going on at public forum. When I look back at meetings, it seems like the public forum's been the source of this divisiveness in the community, not, it doesn't bridge anywhere together. So the notion that, you know, this is, you know, something that's needed, or I take exception to it being taken away in some form, format, that, that's a bunch of malarkey. All it does is further divide the community, and that's all it's done for the last year and a half. So there's been people that have been threatened physically on the council. There's been a lot of town employees that have been upset, and I get the calls, not you. So I've decided to modify the way public forum is conducted for the betterment of the town, its residents, the town employees, and the town council. I'm only asking for some input to initially put forward a plan. And I've got some ideas how I think it should be conducted, and I'm not taking it away. I only want to install some parameters that hopefully will have these meetings be conducted in more, less divisive nature and a less contentious atmosphere. Because it certainly is not, doing nothing is not an option, as far as I'm concerned. So with that being said, I want to just kind of look through some of the ideas I put on the paper here. The new process for public request for future regular bi-monthly town council agenda items to be affected with the regular town council meeting scheduled January 6, 2020. Members of the public will be able to request items placed on the future agenda, meeting agendas, but must submit a said request in writing to at least one council member, the town manager, town clerk, or town solicitor, who may submit the request to me for consideration. That's number one. Number two, eliminate the second public forum from the meeting agenda so that there's only one public forum on the agenda for future regular town council meetings. Number three, place the remaining public forum right after the consent agenda items and before any council action on proposed action items listed under new business or old business, so that folks can comment before a decision is made on an agenda item with the council. The public can voice their concerns, opinions, whatever, before we make our decisions. I want to try and limit the comments and discussion from the public to council action items listed on the regular meeting agenda. Number five, maintain the council president's right and discretion to limit members of the public to five minutes or less. The council president ordinarily will limit the total time for the public forum speakers from the public to a maximum of 30 minutes in total at public forum. Sometimes these public forums have gone on for two hours. And I, I know there was an issue that we needed to hear residents, and that's fine. But again, we cannot have public forums continue the way they've continued. It, it's like open mic at Joe's Bar and Grill, it's crazy. It can't happen that way. We have the town's business, it's very serious. And I, and I take exception to the fact that it's been a very rowdy, as Dorothy has indicated, a very rowdy environment, and I have trouble hearing people when I hear people yelling from the back, you know, whatever they yell at, to try and impede the process. It's just not, it's just not a good way to conduct. And by the way, you know, as president, I'm charged with running the meetings, so I'm trying to make these changes for the best of the residents and anyone that's a part of this process. Some of the rationale for the changes, the bi-monthly regular town council meetings primarily are intended to accomplish the town's regular business that is within the purview of the town council in an orderly and timely and efficient manner. Input, comments, and questions from the public remain invited and encouraged relative to the listed meeting agenda items. The placement of the public forum just before the council action items allows for the interaction of the public on specific agenda items prior to the council decision. Any items not on the agenda can and should be communicated to either the town manager, clerk, myself, or any other council member, so an item can be addressed and looked into for a resolution. These changes are by no means an end-all. I have to start somewhere, and it's my hope that some of these changes will effectuate smoother town council meetings for all involved. So with that, I open up to the council.
Yeah, please. First of all, I want to make a statement that I believe my colleagues are honorable people. I believe our council president is an honorable man. I don't, we don't necessarily agree on issues. I know the solar issue in particular has been very divisive in town. And I don't think any of us are on the take, or any of that take was nonsense. People feel very strongly on an issue. In the public field, very strongly on an issue, a lot of things are said. But I have no reason to believe that the council president has any nefarious motives. Consider him a friend, that him and his wife are going to join me at an event Wednesday night. So even though we disagree, we pretty much are civil to each other. My, my belief is that, and I know a lot of other communities that do like to limit public forum per speaker to maybe five minutes or more. And if something, I believe in Westerly, if it's really a person needs more time, they will put it on the future agenda, I believe it's addressed that way. One of the things I think we should consider, and I know that the legislative bodies do this in Providence, is they have a set of rules in the body itself adopts it, and that's one approach. I'm just putting it out there, that a set of rules for governing the town council and all council members vote on those rules. And we all, the council president and all of us are supplied by those rules. That's one way of approaching this. They do it in the legislature. Both this House and the Senate adopt rules of governing their affairs. That's one solution. I believe that if you know of anybody that threatens a public official, we have the Hopkins Police, or State Police, whatever you choose to do, to file a complaint. The, the things I'm hearing, it's not good, and I've actually had, uh, I know one guy at Spicer chewed me out, was asking me if I was going to resign from the council and all this other type of stuff, and it was a while back. A prominent member of this community who, uh, he did live in this town, but is involved in, uh, one group in town, multiple groups in town, in emergency management service. But anyways, this toxic environment that we have in town of Hopkinum has to stop. I believe in free discussion, ideas, if you've been running town council or chair of any council, you've got to take criticism. And it comes with the territory you got. And people say things that aren't true, they say things that aren't kind, they do things that aren't kind. And I believe that the public has a right to freedom of speech, to say what they believe, provided they don't use curse words and there's an element of the quorum like we have in Congress. But nonetheless, the right of people to express their views is tantamount in a free society. And people can draw their own validity of what they, they believe, what they read, because fortunately, I'm meeting to take, so people want to see what really went on in the meeting. They watched the video. And, but I really believe that the people who work for this town, or are employees of this town, or appointed officials, elected officials, should be free from threats or any other intimidation. And I do think about the security of this, not that the police would appreciate me saying this, but the five of us over up here, we're like sitting ducks with somebody who really was so motivated to grab to the council. I'm glad, I shouldn't say it, but it's a, it's a time limit I've already covered. I would, I do have concerns eliminating the second forum, because when you go to a meeting and you're taking everything in as being said, something might enter your mind after the first forum is gone. So I, I'm a little concerned about eliminating the second forum. But I want to support, and the council president wants me to support him. I respect him as a man, I don't agree with him on solar. He's taken interest in this town, he's a productive citizen in this town. And some of the comments that I've heard, I think are unfortunate, and I respect. Although I'm sure some of my colleagues could strangle me philosophically, and I could probably do that. But I think for honorable people, and I'm just concerned, I, I want people to feel safe if they choose a rightful office, that they're going to be protected and they, they can believe anything they want. That's what America's about. But any intimidation of a public official should not be tolerated. We have elections, you put forward your platform, your beliefs, your credentials, and let the voters decide. And I've lost, having more, more elections in town council than anybody living in this town, maybe not in the history of the town, but I've lost my share and I've won a few. I've won several. But anyway, I just want to say that, you know, I'm not going to take any more time. But maybe, I'm just throwing out as a possibility, and maybe if the council collectively voted on a set of rules, on procedural-type thing, and recognized the right of the president of the town council to recognize that he maintains, or she maintains the quorum, profanity is not accepted. Hopefully, there's no personal attacks and you debate ideas and issues. Thank you.
I categorically, categorically am against your suggestion. I think, I, I agree with the people over there. You absolutely have to have the right for the residents to express themselves. Now, I think the problem is, um, the emotion, okay? So, but they need to be able to have the right to say anything they want, to give you their, their opinion about anything, whether they like you or not. They have the right to say that. And I, I'm not for, for limiting any kind of topic. I think that they've made the trip to come here and give their opinion about things, and it shouldn't just be limited to what's on the agenda. I absolutely agree, disagree with everything that you suggested, I'm sorry.
No, just, you know, I just had a quick comment, I guess, suggestion. You know, you've been here for the last, whatever, year or so, right? And it's been contentious.
Yes, but it's the topic, it's the topic.
Let me finish, yeah. So, so it's, it's, so, you know, there's been issues that have gone on. I have to try and maintain order. So without a set of rules in which to operate under, it, it presents a problem because it's, it's open, it's open forum, it's open mic, and it just... open forum, it's open mic, and it just, it, again, it's resulted in personal attacks. Even though you have not been the subject of these attacks, if this was pointed in your direction, I would have the same reaction.
You don't know.
But, but, but I would tell you.
I don't want to hear anything from the audience, please.
You said she's not been subject to personal attacks. You don't know that.
She has not.
You don't know that.
Well, I'm saying at the meeting, at the meetings.
But I think, I think, how can I say? It's like, I think they have the right to say what they want, all right? Because this is the freedom of speech in this country. I think that the topics have been contentious. But I also think that, you know, in some ways, you have been very defensive too. And so when you're defensive, all it does is just raise the argument and the tension higher. I, I, that, I don't know how to make you just let it roll off. When you let it roll off, they think you don't care. You know, it's kind of hard. It's a, it's a lose-lose situation. But I think, in general, people should have the right to say their opinions on any topic and not be constrained. I think that they, but, but even, even when you say at the beginning of the meetings, okay, we're going to have public forum, and I expect you to be decorous or whatever, even saying that coming out of your mouth based on the past, all that does is just make them more contentious. So I don't know how to help you do that and say, we're having a public forum, but you need to respect everybody in the room. We don't need shouting. We don't need screaming. We don't need profanity. We just need to have open and honest declaration of our opinions so that people, so everyone can get the information and share the information. And I don't know how to make that easy for you, Frank. But I don't think that, that your suggestion is helpful.
Well, again, you know as well as I, that we've all experienced these public forums, okay? And they have not been productive. They've been on a range of topics.
It's in your opinion they haven't been productive.
Again, Sharon, they've been on a range of topics that we cannot discuss because they're not on the agenda.
You say that.
There's passable projects, there's a lot of things that have been mentioned that we can't really converse on. And again, it's a forum that puts the council at a disadvantage because it's not on the agenda, and we cannot go back and forth on that.
But it says here on, in the open meetings, that we can talk about it.
Only, but again, again.
Only information. We cannot discuss, a discussion must be on the agenda.
And I understand what you're trying to say. Believe me, I get it. But, but the point is, these meetings have morphed into shouting matches, they've morphed into finger pointing every two weeks, personal attacks, threats. And, and I have to, as the chair, try and control that. So I'm asking, okay, for everyone to sort of provide some insight that you would like to see in terms of eliminating your, anything, that's not an option for me. So that's not.
Well, but you're not the only one on this council.
No, I know that.
And I wanted to make that point too.
That's fine. But again, I have to make a decision, because I don't think, you know, sitting on the sidelines and not.
Well, I don't think you have, you need to have the majority of the people on the council to agree with that. You just don't know how to say that. And I absolutely will vote against it.
That's fine. You can do that, and I think it is.
I think it can be, I think it can be done. People should be able to say what they want, and they should be said, it can be said in a civil way.
It hasn't been. It hasn't been.
Well, I think it can be.
Well, but it hasn't. So doing nothing, in my opinion, is not an option, like I said before.
I don't think you should have the right to make that decision, frankly.
Well, again.
I think it should be a vote by the whole council, not just your decision.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's why I'm putting it on here, so that we can talk about it, okay? If that's your suggestion.
That's my suggestion. I don't think you have the right to do that.
All I want is asking for input at this one.
Okay.
Okay? You give me your input, I appreciate that. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
I appreciate what Ed had to say, because freedom of speech and freedom of assembly is crucial to a democratic process. And I agree with you on that. However, freedom of speech and freedom of assembly is not an unfettered right. It has limitations. So as much as you can take Article number two, five, thirteen, those articles of freedoms are precise.
They're amendments, they're not articles.
But there are many, many amendments that make it not, that make it not, make it not an unfettered right. There are things you can say, things you cannot, you know, like calling fire in crowded theater, you may not say that. So it's not an unfettered right. It is an important one, but it does have limitations. Now, I believe that you should have all the open and honest comments at a public forum, but it's not a discussion. Public forum is for informational purposes only, if we answer back. It cannot become a discussion unless it is an agenda item, so we have a true discussion. Now, the agenda items of new and old business are generally a discussion, which means to me, it's not just a discussion with the council, but also a discussion with the people that have come. Public forum, and I do understand Frank's concern about the length of the forums. They've really, people have taken advantage of forty minutes, forty-five minutes, thirty minutes, and taking everyone's time, not just their own. So at some point, we have to condense the time. There is other business that has to be done. So I do believe that he should be able to say, you may speak for no more than five minutes, or I would prefer ten minutes. I would prefer that it was, you could speak for no more than ten minutes, so that everyone has a chance to speak, and perhaps public forum doesn't go longer than forty minutes, so we can get to the business at hand. The other issue with public forum is I don't think it should be on agenda items. I think it should be on non-agenda items. The purpose of public forum is to bring forth information that is not on the agenda, so we could address it possibly later on another agenda, or not, or just hear you, and then it goes away. The business section, old business and new business, when it says discussion, that's when the council discusses, and then the public also have part of that discussion, because we can hear you and we can talk back. Not as much as in a workshop, which was very useful the last time we did it. And I thought that was something we should do more of. So my comments on this, and I understand where Frank's going, because I do think between applause and yelling from the floor, we can't hear, people around you can't hear, and things do not move smoothly forward so that we can address your concerns. So what I would like to see certainly is up to ten minutes, because you need to let everyone speak, not just one person for forty-five minutes or longer, which we have indeed listened to. And I listen to it at planning board as well as council. But I would like it to be on subjects not on the agenda. When you get to an agenda item, you should be able to do that discussion. So I am not for public forum agenda items. I would like public forum to be non-agenda items, ten minutes, so that everyone gets a chance to speak, and we perhaps do forty minutes. Half an hour might be too short, but forty-five minutes to an hour gets to be too long, because we have other things that have to be done. And we have other people here waiting to hear what we have to say, and for oftentimes will have votes. So that would be my suggestion. I do appreciate your information, Ed. I absolutely agree with most of it, that it's not unfettered, that there needs to be a way where everyone can speak, and we would appreciate more decorum, then we don't have people calling us or threatening us or upsetting our spouses. That would be helpful, because that is what it causes, and then you have intensity rising. And I have to say, when we did the Second Amendment city for gun control guns, Sharon and I were against it, the other council members were for it. The people there were all gun owners. They were very intense, very passionate, but I never felt threatened, not once. They were intense and passionate, and that was fine. But some of the things, especially with solar, is involved. It has gotten shovelled. You have made other people angry. You may not have been, but you have made others so angry that they are so intense, they have to speak out of council and to us personally, whether by phone or in person. And you don't know, you caused it, but you did. And we would like to prevent that, because Joe is also right, that it is something that is unfortunate and is happening around the country. So I do think we need to do something with public forum to tighten it, but I do think you should be allowed to speak, and certainly on things not on the agenda, because you should have an opportunity to speak on the agenda during the course of the meeting. But they don't. I am not discussing with you, I'm discussing with him.
Okay. They don't get a chance to talk, other than at public forum, because we've talked.
And then they don't. It's a discussion.
So they don't, no, they don't talk to you.
We discuss, we, Frank, make sure that we discuss.
Right.
And then on an agenda item, and then he opens it to the public, and the public can come to the microphone and discuss too.
That's during the second public forum?
No, that's during new business and old business. That's what it says, discuss.
If anyone has a question or concern, we typically allow them to come and speak on that, on new or old business.
Well, I don't think it should be, I don't think the public forum should be limited either just agenda or non-agenda. I think it should be open. I agree with the.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes. I agree with that. And I, and I think we need to request that they do act in a decorous way, even though it's a sensitive matter that's being discussed and very important. But I want to read what it says in writing in the Open Meetings. It says, "Nothing within this chapter shall prohibit any public body or the members thereof from responding to comments initiated by a member of the public during a properly noticed open forum, even if the subject matter of a citizen's comments or discussions were not previously posted, provided such matters shall be for informational purposes only and may not be voted on." But I don't know what the definition of information purpose is.
In a soul.
That's where I have a problem.
Yeah, information was like, what time is the meeting? Oh, it's seven o'clock. I mean, it's literally that simple. I went to the open meetings, I know, up in Rhode Island College.
Yes, I did, I did.
Kevin, do you want to explain the answer Sharon's question?
Yeah, the, actually, I do, and I want to, I want to continue reading from what the rest of that section says. It's, you were reading forty-two, forty-six, six, section D is included.
Correct.
And this, this completes what the rest of that provision says, and it ties in with what Council President and I felt is, has raised in his discussion. It then says, "Nothing contained in this chapter requires any public body to hold an open forum session, to entertain or respond to any topic, nor does it prohibit any public body from commenting on any topic at such an open forum session. No public body or members thereof may use this section to circumvent the spirit or requirements of this chapter." So what that makes clear, the Open Meetings Act makes clear, is that an open forum is not required at all. And in my experience, Hopkinton having two open forums is kind of unique. Municipalities in, where at least as far as councils are concerned, I can't speak to planning boards and school committees and all the other public bodies that are subject to this, but most councils do not have two open forums. Most of them that have them have one, only one, and some of them don't have any, and they're not required at all. And we can all have our philosophies about free speech and opportunities to petition the government for agreements, and nobody questions the constitutional rights. But the business calendar, business agenda of regular council meetings, there are responsibilities the council has, they have to get stuff done. A perfect example is the budget. So if you have budget hearings or a meeting that's going to adopt a budget and have a public forum at that same meeting, it can make it difficult, and sometimes even impossible, to allow discussions that are not related to the budget that night to occur and take away the time, because state law and the town charter has deadlines, when you have to approve the budget by. And it all ties in with the General Assembly and state aid and all that stuff. It's a very complicated process. So I also want to point out that what, my understanding of what the council president is proposing, does not apply to zoning hearings. So the state zoning statutes require there to be a public hearing, which is not the same as public forum at a regular council meeting. A public hearing at a zone change in regard to a zone change application is required by statute. That's what we've seen with these solar projects. And he's not suggesting a limitation on the public's right to speak at these public hearings that are not part of the regular council business. And it's important to remember that, because a lot of what has, in my mind, contributed to some of the more unpleasant aspects of the public forum have actually been solar projects for which there have been public hearings, the ones that involve zone changes. And he's not suggesting any limitations of this nature on those hearings. And those are the ones that are the controversial ones. So this is kind of like a, what we've seen at these public forums is a sort of a spillover of discussions of past projects that have already been completed, they've already, the councils made the decision, it's going to the planning board. And in some cases, the planning board has also done this development plan review and completed that, the building permits issued, and the constructions going on. And people are coming back here still at public forum and talk about, this shouldn't have happened, you should have done this, you should have done that. I mean, at some point, and then, on top of that, now that I think of it, which affects me directly as the solicitor, some of these cases are in Superior Court. And I've seen members of the public come here to question individual council members on legal issues that are actually in Superior Court, which is entirely inappropriate. I've seen, and I've talked about this at a recent meeting, instead of using the, in these pending court cases, instead of using the rules of civil procedure that apply to getting documents and taking depositions of witnesses, people come here and try to do that through, through the Open Meetings Act. And they're also doing access to public records requests, instead of doing discovery like it's supposed to be done when matters are in court. So it's like a big chaotic situation. And I'm not commenting on the particulars of the council president's recommendations. I'm just suggesting to you that this is a, is an enormously complicated process, and it's, it's easily misunderstood and easily exaggerated. But the point I want to make, if I can drive home one point, is that we're not talking about, he's not talking about the public hearings on these zone changes, where the public can come and say whatever they want to say about it before the council votes on changing ordinance to put in a solo thing, or whatever the project might be. So he's talking about the regular, every other, every other week meetings in the public. So it's, it's, it's a difficult thing. The last part, the subsection D that Sharon and I both quoted parts of, they all refer back to the purpose of the Open Meetings Act according to the General Assembly, which is forty-two, forty-six, one. And this is what it says. "Public policy is essential to the maintenance of a democratic society, that public business be performed in an open and public manner, and that the citizens be advised of and aware of the performance of public officials in the deliberations and decisions that go into the making of public policy." So that's what the Open Meetings Act is about. It's not about. It's not about the public speaking their minds, so to speak. It's about not doing stuff in secret, doing everything open in front of you so you can see it. That's what the philosophy is. And as I said, with the example of the zone change statutes, the public hearings they require are not what he's talking about in the public forum suggestions or ideas he's coming up with. So I think a lot of confusion can come here, and we can talk, there are libraries full of printed materials on the First Amendment. Everybody has their own philosophy about that. That's not something we're going to solve tonight. But nobody's talking about curtailing the public's right to speak or to petition the government, because everything he said is still going to be a public forum. There's still going to be public hearings on zone changes and those kinds of things where to acquire by law. Everything's still going to be done in open, and everybody still has the right to ask, would still have the right to ask there, any one of the council members, to ask the Council President to put something on the agenda. That, to me, is pretty non-controversial and consistent with all the laws that I've referenced tonight.
Number one, I think we have a communication problem. And that's been brought up more than once, how citizens find out about the meetings, et cetera, what the agenda's going to be, et cetera. And so I think that the open, the public forum might be, and still needs to be, out there for people to discuss whatever they want to discuss. They've finally got here. They need to have a right to give their opinions. I agree with maybe limiting it to five minutes or ten minutes. That part I don't have a problem with, but I think they should have the right to discuss. And in a civil manner, and promise that that's the way it's going to be.
And if it's not, then we have to rethink it.
Right.
I have a point with that.
Yes, I just want to, because I know your folks have mentioned, you know, five or 10 minutes is fine, but I wanted to limit the overall public forum to 30 minutes in total, you know, because we've got a lot of other business. So I thought five minutes, allowing six people to speak versus 10 to three was a better option. I just want to clarify what my 10 was.
I only have one other thing I'd like to say too. One of the things I would like to ask of the public, and I suppose of councillors, but generally of the public, is to try to keep municipal employees out of your discussion. If you have a problem or a concern or a comment about our employees, which is personnel, which we cannot deal with, I prefer that you take it to our town manager, to Mr. McGarry. There is no reason to be discussing most of our employees in public. It's nice to say nice things, but that's not the case. So I would like to respectfully ask the public to please keep the municipal employees out of public forum. And if you have an issue or a comment or a suggestion, to please go through Mr. McGarry. That is Boberson. You're right here.
Thank you.
Is there a comment?
Yeah, I just wondered, the fact that, as the solicitor said, that certain issues have a legal nature, and the council really can't respond, I think it's probably best to say that's in litigation, we can't respond, or it's a personal matter. There's certain elements of privacy, could be an investigation going on, criminal investigation, whatever, that somebody might be interested in. Certain law protects the council in executive session, there's certain topics, labor negotiations is another example, that the council cannot really share going to extent. But we need to have a society where all points of views are recognized. And they don't, people don't have an agreement, but in order to conduct business, legislative bodies, the Congress, state legislatures, they have to have rules in order to conduct government business. And people have the media, they can write letters, but I believe that people should be free to say what they want, but it's probably better for the town council, not only presently but in the future, to have the council adopt a set of rules that we all agree on, spelled out so that even if you have a couple of councillors that want something on your end or even want, it gets on air and people can speak to that issue. But the town is, I know, very frustrated, and I just believe that the most important thing for a public official to do is educate the public on what the procedural rules are, not only that philosophy and say... And it would be good if we had a handout, the Town Clerk Act. We usually have the agenda, but what do you do if you file a complaint? Where do you go? What is the source? Whether it's the council, the building and zoning official, or the town planner, or the zoning board, a planning board? Because a lot of people, even very smart people, do not know all the procedural things. And part of being successful participant in local government is knowing what the rules or regulations are and the protocol. And a lot of times, in deadlines and the timeframe and all that type of stuff. So it'd be good if we had a sheet or something, due's and dos of government, or some type of fact sheet that people can refer to on certain things, so they're not confused. You know, just like some people don't realize is that there was between the planning board and zoning board and the town council, and maybe the conservation commission, what their roles are in development issues. I'm just using that as an example. But I want to, because I think that would help this town council and the town government and the public understand how to maneuver or deliberate of town government. Just a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Phil. Phil, do you have any quick comments on some of this public forum, or anything you want to share, I guess from your experiences, and you've sat through enough of them. Yeah, I just think, you know, inaction is really not an option. I think it's important for me to try and maintain order and establish some guidelines that we work with going forward. I don't know if people have...
My only comment would be that...
Very well respected, but the council and the town, so I just, that's why I'm asking.
My only comment would be that, you know, my role is to handle day-to-day business in town government, and I'm a liaison between department heads and the town council and vice versa. And my interest is the day-to-day operations, the agenda items on a new business and old business, the nuts and bolts to just keep the town.
Right.
And that's where my interest lies.
Right. Okay. All right. All right.
New business.
Yeah, I guess we want to move on.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move number three to number one on new business.
Okay, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We just want to get to Mr. Ralvi and his client. Thank you for your appearance. So again, moving number three to number one on the new business is consider motion and possibly vote on whether to accept the offer to purchase the town's interest in a parcel of land located at Zero Hightown Avenue, Sessions, Flat 27, Lot 16.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the offer to purchase the town's interest in the parcel of land located at Zero Hightown Avenue, Eighty, Twenty-seven, Lot 16.
I'll say it.
Okay, motion, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. I believe there was discussed a condition about merger. There's a way one to include it.
Okay. And I would like to add to the motion that the two pieces of property will merge into one parcel, so that it will no longer run two parcels.
Let's check that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion, folks? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck. Thank you.
Okay. Number one on the new business, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to authorize the town council president to exercise a memorandum of agreement between the towns of Hopkinton and Richmond, to share the services of a certified building official, to administer an enforce the provisions of the State Building Code, State Property Maintenance Code, and other applicable state municipal codes and labels.
Same. Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion, folks? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Last item on the new business, discussion of Charahoe School Committee's December 10, 2019 action on its audit subcommittees November 21, 2019. Recommendations regarding Charahoe draft audit report and consideration and possible motion and vote to send a correspondence of the Charahoe School Committee requested by Council Vice President first. Scott, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's very important to, there's probably no, very few charahoe critics that serve on the town council, and me, you know, I know Conville Thompson, who he is, questioning a lot of the schools, maybe some others. But I think that a former member of the school committee who maintains a strong interest in the town, and that's Dorothy Gardner, and I'd like to thank her publicly for being here, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Gardner for her service to the town in her service on the Charahoe Audit Subcommittee. She's certainly more conversant than I. But I think it's very important for the town council to support Hopkinton people and people who work with the Charahoe School Committee. Charahoe School Committee is not a land unto itself. They have to deal with the public, they have to deal with volunteers outside the school committee, and I would like to at least give some support to our audit subcommittee. And I still have to learn more about this topic, but I would like to ask, no, I'm looking for it, but I'd like to have Mrs. Gardner, she's the only one here from the audit subcommittee, and give us better background that I could possibly look to give.
Yeah, that's all, Dorothy.
In the past, there have been issues, and actually, an audit was held up in years past because of things that the audit subcommittee questioned or found, and there have been management letters sent along with the completed audit and approved audit, and the management letters have been sent to the school committee. I've worked in many places. I've worked in hospitals, I've worked for a couple of for-profits, I worked for a large pharmaceutical company. And there were in all of them, some of these smaller yearly audits, but there also were larger, almost like a forensic audit, that would be done maybe every five years or so, and they would look back. If management changed, especially if the management for the financial section changed, that meant an audit. As myself, working in the pharmaceutical industry, we did what we called monitoring a site, but it was actually an investigative site, which was actually, we were auditing them to be sure that they were following the contract, following the protocol, all of these things. And then I would be audited by another committee that would come and look at my sites, and it was always, you know, just random times, but it was at least once a year. Someone would come, and then someone would audit, the auditors, I mean, because these were drugs, so people's lives depended on it. Well, in speaking during this audit subcommittee meeting, we realized that a large audit has never been done in over 50 years at Charahoe. Yes, every year they have this, what I call a little audit, a tiny audit, where an auditor comes in and he pulls random files, and he looks at some specific areas that are required by the state, and again, he pulls some random files, and he compares what they're doing against what the standard is. So this year, we asked the auditor, Mr. Wilkinson, would he recommend that a large audit be done? Because one had never been done. And that they had several people working in finance, and they were all, none of them were actually chosen by interview, but rather appointed by somebody. The first person in, that I, I guess was the second person in finance who took care of the money, had been, was a school teacher, and he taught business. And they just kind of said, how about, you know, being a financial person? And then he brought in, and that's what he did. And as you know, school teachers are required to have a master's degree. I don't know what he had a master's degree in. And then he needed more help as the budget became larger and the school system became larger, and he asked Bryan Stanley to come in and help him. And when that guy left, Bryan became the financial person. He went to Bryan College. I don't know what his degree was, if he even had a degree. All that said next to his name was intended Bryan College. He had a helper, Susan. She had worked in human resources, and Bryan had her come and help him, and he taught her what he knew, just as he had been taught what Mr. Fabio knew. And now we have another person that has come into the finance department. Her name is Wilcox, and she has a CPA. So anyways, when we were talking, we said, you know, hey, you know, all this stuff going on Providence, Central Falls, you know, all these schools are having problems. And I myself had to be a witness at a huge federal trial in Boston. I mean, I was just sitting at home, and this knock on my door. Open the door, and this is the sheriff. He gives me a subpoena and says, you've been served. Been served what? Well, I had to testify. And I was actually testifying for the defense. And it turned out very well, because the hospital I worked at and the department that I ran, the guy that came in and offered me money, I threw him out of my office. I mean, I just threw him out, you know, I never thought twice about it. I said, get the hell out of my office. What do you think this is, up a breath? And off he went. Never heard from him again. So I know that things can happen, even if they're not meant to happen. I mean, sometimes, you know, you have the wrong formula at the top of a spreadsheet, and you never notice it, and you lose hundreds of thousands of dollars. So this seemed like a very good idea. So we all talked about it, and Mr. Wilkinson agreed, that was a good idea, because he'd seen other municipalities, that's what they do. And Ms. Wilcox agreed, and we said, fine, since this audit is coming in late, and the school did not want it to go in late, we said, we'll tell you what, we'll put some contingencies in, and if these contingencies are met, and the changes that we request in numbers are met, you can consider it approved. Well, we never got the letters. They were, apparently, something happened after we left, because we left believing, you know, this is it, and that's why you have this, this is a draft, but it's only a draft because it was sent out to everyone, and we were all expected, you know, to write back and say, hey, you know? And we all did write back and said, this audit is not approved because the contingencies have not been met. And that's where we stand right now. I don't know if it was the people in finance that said, I don't want to be audited, you know, I don't want a big audit to happen, I don't want this to happen. I have no idea what happened. All I know is when we left that meeting, Mr. Wilkinson had agreed. The entire audit subcommittee voted yes, it was unanimous, and Ms. Wilcox never said anything. So I have no idea what happened. All I can tell you is if I said to the people... All I can tell you is if I said to the people I work for, "I don't want you to audit me," they would have opened the door and said, "Don't let it hit you on your way out." There would have been no question. So my question is, is there any reason for an Audit Subcommittee? Because I don't want to put my name to a committee that merely exists for people to sign something and say, "Oh, yeah, this is fine. I refuse to do that." So I'm here to tell you that when you go to the omnibus meeting, maybe you could find out. Because as it stands now, the belief of all the members of the Audit Subcommittee are that this interim large audit should be done. Not because we believe somebody has done something wrong necessarily, but we believe that it should be done.
So you're talking about this, right? About I?
Yes, they were supposed to...
Request the audit to terminate.
Contingent upon the following conditions. Received legal letter. That is a letter that was supposed to come from the attorney for the school department, Mr. Anderson. Receipt of final letter from the auditor. And that is the letter from the auditor that says, that recommends to the school committee, on the basis of the information and the vote that we had, that we need to have another, you know, an audit.
Major, major order.
Yeah, can I speak?
It's too... They do a many, but it's not a forensic audit. It's a periodic risk management review policy, which I think is very wide. The forensic audit costs a great deal of money, so they may have chosen not to do that. Do you think you...
Yes, but the page two doesn't tell you what you... It just says, "A letter from the auditor." It doesn't tell you what's supposed to be in that letter. And I thought the bottom, this risk, periodic risk management review is what? So it's really what's on here.
Yes, receipt of the final letter from the auditor. Yes.
Because I only have, I only have these...
It's only two, it's only two papers. At the Charahoe School Committee, last Tuesday, they did approve the audit. Because the auditor was there.
We...
You made, you made it not, but the school committee approved the audit. Because I was there on Tuesday night when they did that. I don't know whether this, they had made the corrections that you have in this...
They did, they made the corrections. Yes.
They made the corrections. Yep, they did not, my understanding from what you're saying is they did not include a letter to say, "Please do a periodic risk management review."
Yes, they did not include that.
When we, when I was there, one of the things we also talked about is the problem with cybersecurity and that they really need to look at the audit and make sure things are backed up and that they have a number of people looking at it. So I know we discussed that at that meeting. But I know that a forensic audit is very, very expensive, so it has to be in the budget. But perhaps it is something to bring up at the omnibus meeting.
I'd say it was similar to a forensic one.
Right, but it's a good thing to bring up at the omnibus meeting because what we want to be able to do is ask them to put in a stronger audit of the books, because every 10 years, it would make very good sense.
Well, since we haven't had one done in 15...
Oh, sure. I agree. It's a, and then they can put it into the budget, because it needs to be in the budget.
We currently have an unsigned amount of, what is it, $2 million something?
Yeah, $2,835,000.
And they're, but they're supposed to have 2%, which is the $2 million. The $835,000 is from this year. You know, $835,000 is the money that is extra from this last year. So I'm sure we'll be discussing that $835,000, because we'd like them to go back to their, you know, at 2%, which will be around the $2 million mark. So I'm sure we will address the $835,000. But I would like to see, I think it's a very good suggestion, is that they have the stronger or the bigger audit.
Oh, yeah, they need, they need it very badly.
And in that case, they need to take maybe part of that money and put it aside for that, because that is, we should find out.
I think it should just be done.
And can you, can you get examples of the kind of audits that have been done in other districts? You said they were doing them...
Right, right. Well, this is, this was Mr. Wilkinson also stated, "Other municipalities use the reviews as part of their overall risk management programs."
No, it's a very good idea. So let's hope that they can decide to do that. We can bring that up at the omnibus meeting. Salute.
I do have a question.
Great, direct ask.
Should we write a letter? I'm not going to be at the omnibus meeting. I've got to run another meeting, so I won't be there. And my concern, of course, for the omnibus meeting is all we do is talk about the budget. We don't talk about other things. I'm not impressed with the school committee because, of course, my issue slightly off subject to the outside management study, which impacts where they spend money and where they spend it, because the school district is run, they have a maintenance of effort line item, which they have to follow, like, you know, short of non-recurring expenses and stuff like that. And I, I think the school committee collectively, I'm not talking about individual Charahoe section, but you was an exception when you was on the school committee. George Newell was, Mr. Abbott was, and Kevin Miller. And there's certain ones I can think of that didn't go along with the flow at Charahoe, they actually question you. But when you're dealing with around 75% of the taxes of Hopkins, the property taxes, it gets to be serious, serious. And it just seems that a lot of these meetings, the omnibus meeting, which I usually go, but I have, I have to run a meeting that was, has to be postponed from January 1st to the 2nd of Wednesday, so that's much, I'm head of the organization, but... The omnibus meeting only talks about the budget and I question the productivity of that exercise. School committee pretty much does what they want. They endure the town council members being there. And I'm not going to be nassier than that, but your committee or any volunteers need to be respected. And I just got the impression that the Audit Subcommittee is basically something that maybe school committee takes a big block, but then the school committee goes out and does what they want, so I mean...
No, they made the changes. She said that, you know, the things that they have recommended, they need to make those changes, which is good. But the overall review that she's...
I'll stand corrected on that, huh?
But the overall review she's talking about is something that perhaps we could write a letter about encouraging them to do, but it also has to be put in the budget as such. I think they certainly still absolutely respect the audit committee.
Yeah, I mean, I won't, I know I've been obsessed with this outside management study because when you do a budget, the school committee has the power. And most people forget, the only, the only voting on the bottom line is the school, but the school committee has the ultimate authority to move those line items around. So even though it's around 75% of our town budget, school committee has the power not to follow the line items as the budget's approved. And that's the significant amount of economic power, financial power that the school committee has. But if the council would be agreeable, I would at the minimum like to give some type of moral support to the Audit Subcommittee and say that we, they do a more detailed audit of Charahoe finances than they've done in the past. What type of wording you should give Dottie for us to do that?
Well, I, it's very, very frustrating.
Can we have order, Mr. President? Mrs. Gardner could, could address you from the podium. I can't hear her conversation, because she's a leak to the microphone.
Sorry. What is it, what would...
No, just go to the microphone.
Dorothy, go to the microphone.
Just go to the microphone, then.
Just go to the microphone.
Go to the microphone.
I don't even know what the Audit Subcommittee is supposed to do anymore, quite frankly. You know, if you, if you write a recommendation and you expect that recommendation to be included in the letter...
Mrs. Gardner, I just couldn't hear you when you were standing. That's all I was saying. You just couldn't address us from the microphone. That's all I was saying.
I couldn't hear them when they were questioning me, because I'm a little deaf. Okay.
What'd you say?
Dottie, go to the microphone.
Yeah, Dottie, can you go to the microphone?
Dottie, go to the microphone.
Go to the microphone. Go to the mic, all right, okay. Speak into the mic. I have, I have some quick questions, please.
Thank you, Eddie.
Who is Gail Wilcox? Is this a staff member, but I'm not sure.
She is under Susan.
Okay, all right, that's who it is, okay. She's an assistant to the finance director.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Just so we, so I understand. In our, in our packet is a two-page memo from minutes on the Subcommittee. There was four items. But I'm under the impression that the second item, which is received the final letter from the auditor, which is the major audit that you suggested take place from it and was agreed upon by the auditor, was not, was not in the approved audit.
Well, no, we would accept this yearly audit that was just done if these letters were included with the audit, because we felt they were very important. And indeed, the recommendation to have, you know, like a big audit done. I mean, I don't know how else to describe it. You know, a more complete audit.
Right.
Because the audit that they do every year, in fact, we had brought up to the auditor in years past, "Did you know about this?" And he went once, "What? What are you talking about?" And I said to him, "Well, this happened, and this happened, and this happened." "Oh, well, we better come back. We better have another meeting. I have to check on that." So if, you know, we see things like that occasionally, then I think that maybe we need to go back and look. Someone professional that's doing a complete audit should go back and look and see if maybe we, you know, it's been missed, not because the auditor is lax that's doing his yearly audits. If you read the audit, you'll see that they only choose a few random files. And they also look at the state requirements, you know, how they're supposed to make out the budget and all that good stuff. That, that's it.
So, so why...
Things that are under the radar.
So when the school committee approved the audit last Tuesday?
That, right.
Okay, was number two included in that approval process?
They approved this audit, but we didn't approve it. That's what I'm saying. The school committee approved the audit, apparently. But the Audit Subcommittee did not approve it, which is the usual step. What usually happens is you have an audit, they print it, we go through it page by page. I think there were 100 and, I don't know, unless you're 142, 114, something like that pages. And we go through all of them. And we read their little recommendations. And we came up with a big recommendation this year, which we wanted in the management letter. And they got a little snarky after we left. I mean, you know, I started, I wrote to Gail Wilcox, and I said, "You know, where's the letter?" She said, "Well, you know, they're not required unless this, like a finding of fault or finding an error or something." And I said, "Well, we want that management letter because it's important. It's important for them to hear this and know that we recommend that we have these larger audits." And the auditor agrees with us.
Do you know whether this draft letter was sent to the school committee? Do you know whether this draft letter was sent to the school committee? Was it in their packet?
No. Deb Carney said she was worried that she had sent it to the school committee, but I don't know, you know.
Okay, I don't know that. I know she wasn't there either. I think there was...
I have no idea.
...a committee there needing, yeah, okay.
Mr. President, my concern right, right at the moment, and it's quarter nine, is should the council at least adopt, have you send under the name of the town council a letter asking for a more detailed audit of Charahoe finances that's normally done? That's pretty general without being specific. But it will show that we'd like to have a more detailed audit that has been done in the past. And I'd like to put in the thing about an outside management study. If you think that will sink the motion, then I would, I would put that in there. But I think it's important to stand behind our people and it would show that the council actually respects volunteers who work on and especially in light of the fact that the, the way that Audit Subcommittee was treated by the school committee, I think should concern us all. You know, it's a question of respect. You're talking about respect. Well, the Charahoe Audit Subcommittee deserves some type of respect.
But I don't know whether they were disrespected. I think that Mr. Mandovi should check with the school department before sending that letter. But I do think the letter asking for the more advanced audit is a good suggestion. But before we start accusing people of being disrespectful, because when I was at the school committee meeting, they were not disrespectful of the auditor or of the Audit Committee Subcommittee, and thank them. So I would like to make sure that Mr. Mandovi can check with the school to see what was in their packet, because we don't get those packets. And then indeed, perhaps we still would write the letter about the, a more advanced audit, which is recommended by the Subcommittee, which is, I think, perfectly acceptable. I know they did not discuss that at the school committee.
I think they are protesting too much, which makes me very worried.
My concern is this, disrespect isn't only words, it's actions. You can disrespect somebody by ignoring them and just doing your own thing and not even taking consideration where you know people are thinking. I mean, that's a form of disrespect. It's not only what somebody says in a court.
But no one was there at the, at the school committee meeting from the Audit Subcommittee. No one was there. So I, I didn't hear any discussion back and forth either.
But a lot of times, if you, if somebody, or somebody, or something, whether it's a committee, or they put their name behind something, that in itself speaks. You know, you get a letter from somebody, that letter speaks. They don't physically have to be there. I mean, it's nice for somebody to be there, but they don't physically have to be there. Just like somebody contacts the town council, they might work on a second shift. They might be, have child, childcare issues or whatever, whatever the situation is. That doesn't mean they don't care. They just preoccupied.
I mean, she did say...
I agree with you. We need to find out what's in their package.
Right, because...
Yeah, so...
Yeah, because she said they did do the suggestions that they have here, but they did not do the larger suggestion, which is the earlier page, which is of value.
Right, so what I'm hearing, just so I can recap on this. Scott wanted to send some kind of letter of moral support for the Audit Subcommittee. Now, I know Dorothy has stated that the Audit Subcommittee didn't approve. Right, you didn't approve your, your work and thus went to the school committee. They already approved the audit without your approval, which is a problem, I think. And then the larger audit recommendation that you, you agreed should happen, the auditor agreed should happen. I'll call the superintendent and I'll get the lowdown and figure out what, what we can, how we can address the issue and how we can support you. How's that?
Well, we table it to the next meeting and hopefully...
I'll have the answers.
Okay, I agree.
But I want to, I don't agree with Dottie on all issues, but I want to salute her for her work. People come and go, like Dottie Goddard's not around a long time and has had long interest in Charahoe Hopkins and Charahoe.
As I said before, this is very strange, because I've never had this happen or ever seen it happen. You know, in the years that I've been on this Audit Subcommittee. So I'm quite concerned, quite concerned. Something rotten Denmark.
It's only me there.
Thanks for coming. And I thank the council president for putting this on the agenda.
Thanks, Scott. All right, thank you all. I'll continue this conversation with the superintendent. Next on the agenda, boards and commissions. Number one, discuss considering possibly vote to reappoint Daryl Leary to the Conservation Commission.
Mr. President? I'll let you second. I'll let you second.
Scott, make the motion.
I'm not going to make the motion. Let Bob have his call.
I was just going to say, salute. She's a wonderful person. I think she's great on the Conservation Committee.
Do we have a second? I can't remember.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Having heard none, go ahead, Scott.
No, I'm, I should call a vote.
Having heard none, all those in favor of Daryl Leary's reappointment, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Last public forum, Joe.
Real quick.
Real quick. Jill Moro, Old Depot Road. I just want to comment on something that Kevin mentioned. Thinking back, we've all learned an awful lot going through this whole process with the solar. For an example, I'm glad to believe that we're at the end of this. But at the Chase Hill Road Project, myself and Carol and others handed up flyers and we had 70 people attend that meeting. They sat there for three hours and were not able to speak at all.
That's correct.
I was, it's because of the process. I was in the hallway at the elementary school at the intermission asking residents to stay. And they said, "Look, we can't. I've got to get up at 5:00." Oh, whatever. They have jobs. We thought we'd be able to speak and we're just going to speak. And I had a couple of residents say, "Well, I'll come back to the public forum." And they can't even answer me, you know? Then what I have to say at that point? So I think what's happened with these solar hearings, and myself included, I get frustrated with them. Both of us and other people in this room with the Old Depot, we probably sat through two or three, maybe even four hearings where we listened to the attorney and the developers and the paid witnesses. And that certainly is their right to do that. But then you get to the point where the residents get up and Frank was very good. He never limited us at all as far as the amount of time. But it was frustrating. And I think people would get up and holler things from the audience, number one, between, and you guys did the best you could, but between the elementary school and the charitable middle school, to Dorothy's point, we can't hear out there in the audience with a microphone set up the way it was. Al Diaria was telling me at one of the planning board meetings, he had that he couldn't see anyone in the audience because of the lighting to even see their hands. So there was a lot of constraints and I think that's added to the frustration. Frank and I had discussed at one point the possibility if the witness for reforestation stands up and has a presentation. And maybe at that point, the residents could speak for five minutes if they had questions of that person. And then go to the next witness and then have the residents speak. Whether that could work or not, I don't know. But I think what, to Kevin's point, and he's correct, where you have the hearings and the residents are allowed to speak, but when you sit for two or three hearings and you can't speak, and then I've had probably three or four people tell me, "Joe, I'll go to the next town council meeting and I'll speak during public forum about that." And guess what? Those suckers can't even answer me, you know, because they're frustrated because they can't get to talk. So it's more about the process, I think.
Yeah, I think I was upfront, you know, as best I can.
Right.
Giving folks a heads up that there's five, you know, witnesses to testify and you may not get to the public aspect and, you know, and we'll always continue it until we proceed that public input. So, you know, I do the best I can with whatever's...
Yeah, it's not a slight... Now, what are you trying to do there? Some of it was the point I said to Carol DeRosa, when we did the flyers, maybe we should have put a little notation on there that you may not get to speak tonight to know the process of what's going to happen. And that was up all for not doing it. But that's where I think a lot of the frustration comes from is that you just can't speak. And I agree with everyone else that spoke up and said, "That's my only avenue to come up here and discuss issues, to vent sometimes, to have negative things as well as positive things to say." And I think it's wrong to take that right away from us to get up and voice our opinion. I sent Bill an email and Frank, and what I didn't realize, it also goes to the council, but I said that, you know, we can, any one of us, you know, we can agree to disagree, but the point is we can talk about it. And he could tell me his points, I could tell my points, we could walk away and that's the end of it. But if we don't have conversations and talk about things, how are we ever going to solve these issues? That's my only point. Thank you.
Thanks for... Yes, sir.
Ed Love from Brookside. In listening to what the counselor advised, that state law doesn't require, open meeting law doesn't require a public forum at all. In my search through the town of Hopkins ordinances and the charter, I can find no avenue for addressing you as a public citizen, as a resident, on any issue. I can't find any procedure to do that except through my interaction with you at the council and during the public forum. And so what is being suggested is that, you know, you're being gracious, you know. My interpretation of what the attorney told you is that you're being gracious just to hold a public forum. But what I'm saying is that I can find no procedural avenue for me to discuss any topic with you except at a council meeting and in most instances at a public forum. So with that, you know, with that limitation to leaving that public forum, it would, in my opinion, be a wrong. The other point that I would make in listening to you talk about, you know, what delays the business of the evening, the fact that there are two public forums. If you were to consider that the first public forum, the topics that were addressed would only address agenda items. But at the second public forum, topics that were addressed by the public could address things extraneous to the agenda items would be an alternative to eliminating that.
Yeah. Can I just comment on terms of your first comment about not being able to address any one of us except for public forum? The town's website has our contact info. Just call me. Email me.
No, but I mean in a public forum to...
No, no, I know. But again, there is a conduit for you to reach out to us and other, you don't have to do it at public forum. Joe does it all the time. I'm charging him. I've got a meter right. So it's...
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah. So anyway, but okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of Betty Louis Livin, Ernest O. Pindysen, and Gail Prata, recently deceased.
Motion meeting, sent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.